Start the, start the meeting.
Uh huh.
So, roll call please Cindy.
Mark Bouchard. Joanne Sherkey.
Here.
Cindy Valentine here, Artie Bryson.
Here.
Kristy Hilton.
Here.
Krista Regan.
Here.
Kufel.
Here.
Okay, everyone's here. Um, for everybody else is, I, I would, if you can mute your, uh, your mic so we don't get all the background noise. And then if you wish to talk in the public comments or, or whenever else, you know, he's unmuted. Um, that helps, helps everything out quite a bit, so. Um, so we don't get a bunch of background noise. Uh, first thing on the agenda, I have Bill, or no, actually, I want to amend the agenda. I don't have one of the ones amended. Um, I want to put on there under new business five, um, that we purchased a firewall. And it's, it's in conjunction with, um, um, phone line connectivity to the whole township, actually, the, the, um, the whole compass. So I'd like to amend the agenda, make a motion, amend the agenda on number five, uh, purchase of a firewall. And, um, uh, for, uh, up for discussion, so.
Support.
Okay, we have motion and support. Uh, everybody, any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Okay, motion carries. And next I'd like to do, uh, bills payable, entertain a motion.
Make a motion for bills payable in the amount of one hundred and fifty-eight thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight dollars and eighty-one cents.
Support.
Okay, motion to support, any, uh, discussion on anything on that? Nope. Hearing none, roll call vote please.
Sorry, I had to unmute myself. Um, Joanne Sherkey.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Kristy Hilton?
Yes.
Krista Regan? Sandy Kufel?
Yes.
Mark Bouchard?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. All right, next we have the supervisor's report. Get everything organized here. Um, and as I always start out with these, uh, first with high water. Um, I typed this out like Thursday. Oh, it's a little different now. Current, uh, water level has been holding in the last month, really around five seventy-seven point six of seeped, but with the rain that we got last night and today, it shot up to, uh, we're about five seventy-seven point nine. Um, so it shot up three tenths of a foot. And, uh, we're supposed to get more rain tonight and tomorrow till through about noon, I guess, so. That's what it is, so. I'm gonna actually mute everybody, then when I'm done with the report, I'll unmute all. So. Okay, um, I've been doing a lot of work on enforcement at, you know, uh, now. Because to me, that's a bigger issue than, uh, anything else. Um, thing that really has me concerned with, the St. Clair County, uh, sheriff has not found a replacement yet for the officer in charge of the Marine Patrol. Last year we had lieutenant, or last few years, we had Lieutenant Reed, and he retired. As now, there's nobody in charge there that I, I know of. And I expressed my concern with that, the folks at the county, um, and the sheriff. And still, we, I haven't gotten an answer on that. Um, and, um, as far as putting the permanent, uh, no wake rule intact as triggered by levels. Uh, like if water reaches this level, it will go into effect and, and, uh, it doesn't, that's really off the table for this year. Um, because they haven't, uh, I mean, I was talking to the DNR Enforcement Center, and since the shutdown of all this, they're, they're, they're not going, coming to work. They don't answer the phone calls, and they're not getting, I'm not getting any email whatsoever. And by the time that goes through with the public hearings and, uh, oops, I dropped my page, everything else, it'll, it'll be too, definitely too late for this year. So I'm, I'm definitely looking at, at more enforcement. Um, I have a DDA meeting tomorrow night, and I'm proposing, one of the things I'm proposing with the DDA for tomorrow's meeting, if they will pay up to twenty-five thousand dollars for no wake enforcement for the Clay Police to patrol the water. Um, they can't foot the whole bill, but they can certainly pay money that's in the, the section of the DDA, which basically goes from St. John's Drive up to Elginak Harbor Club. So they can pay for, for the North Channel. And, uh, hopefully tomorrow, they'll, they'll approve that. And, uh, we can get some, uh, more patrol, uh, time out there. The only thing that really, that worries me about that, and I'll be quite truthful, is that if the sheriff sees us patrolling, they may not be so apt to want to patrol with their funds down here. And I, uh, I posed that question to them last year, they promised me, no, that won't be the case, Artie, we, we'll still have the same amount of patrols down here. And, uh, so, uh, like I say, that's one thing we'll have to watch closely. In my mind, we should have three boats out patrolling the waterways around, uh, in, in our area between Clay Township, Ira, Elginak, and, uh, not just one boat, when they, they can put people in it, so. Um, I'm gonna seek to have that same promise made to me and to the township. Because it's, it's just a fear that I have. Uh, we've been selling the unfilled sandbags to residents, uh, quite, you know, quite frequently, and, uh, we're, we're now selling, those are eighteen dollars per hundred. And we're selling the filled sandbags for fifty cents a bag. And to get them, you have to make an appointment, uh, with Chrissy. Uh, she'll meet you here at the office and collect the money, and, um, at that point, she'll give you the unfilled sandbags, or you can, uh, make a, then you go, for the filled ones, you go over to the water department, and by appointment, we'll set, if, if you, if you, if you buy a hundred, you want twenty-five at a time, you tell us when you come. We'll have twenty-five sitting out there for you to, uh, to come and get. And, uh, so far, that's been working out pretty good. Uh, the filled sandbags are definitely on a, um, uh, they, you know, we'll sell them to you as, um, as supplies last. Uh, right now, we really, with social distancing, it is, it's tough for us to fill them right now. But we do have, I don't know, we probably have about thirty-five hundred, three thousand of them there still. So I just soon get, get those sold out to where people can use them. Our COVID nineteen report. As I typed this last Thursday, we had zero cases in the township, but now we do have a new one. So we have one active case in the township. Um, and one thing I, I was thinking about was that, um, you know, I, these, as these businesses start to open, or some of them have, uh, they have to spend a little bit of money to make their, their place safe. Uh, sneeze protection and, and whatever. So I'm proposing to the DDA that, and we can only do this within the district, which is from Elginak to, uh, basically the old Cheers Restaurants. One of the businesses on M twenty-nine. Well, I'm proposing that we have a COVID, a C nineteen grant for the businesses where we, and, and we'll go backwards too. If they paid for, bought stuff back in March or something, where we will refund them any expenses to make their business safe to open, uh, for anything, basically keeping their employees or the customers safe from the COVID nineteen virus, up to three thousand dollars. And like I say, we'll go retro for anything that was already purchased, and, um, uh, we'll probably keep it open or look at it maybe at the, under August or September, and see how it's going, if we need to extend it or not. And just another thing too, on the C nineteen, I saw today where the governor is allowing the restaurants up north in the UP and the Brown Traverse City and whatnot, I think it's nineteen counties there, for the restaurants to open up to, um, fifty percent, I believe, capacity. And I can only assume that that's how it will be here in St. Clair County, once that comes, uh, where, where we can open. And so it's more of a, a question for the county, the health department, and the state level. I sent an email to, uh, people at the county, um, the health department, and, um, uh, hopefully we'll run it up to the poll, the LLC, if, if they serve alcohol. Allowing them during this transition time, if we can allow them to seat outside. Uh, it would, it would depend on the business, on what they have available. If they got some extra lawn area, they can put a, a fence up, a, a tent maybe, if, if they so choose, or just have outside seating. That'll, number one, it will, um, increase their capacity, because these folks are already hurting to say, well, you can only seat half of what you, you normally can. You know, that, that could help, uh, hurt them, you know, trying to get back on their feet. It'll increase their capacity, and number two, it's probably safer to sit outside with the virus going around than it is inside. Um, so I, I, I asked them to consider that and run that idea up the flagpole so we can be ready. That's something maybe the DDA could help some of the businesses in the district, you know, accomplish, uh, once we get that, okay to do that. Um, all right, where am I now? Uh, let's see. First, Community Health Center is, is doing COVID testing. I really don't know the number that they're, they're having testing. I'm hearing that, I'm not sure if it is available yet, but they're talking about be, uh, doing the antibody testing at some point in time also. Um, the donations are going well for the food pantry, and, you know, like, and the food pantry is keeping up with the, the demand that they're on. I tell you, our community, we're blessed because, uh, the, the amount of people are donating money for this and other, and the, the food giveaway causes. It's really amazing. I, I think last week, I, I had my dropped off at the township, told twenty-one hundred dollars this last week uh, for, for either the food pantry or the, uh, food giveaway. Um, last Saturday, oh, it was two Saturdays ago now, we gave away about a hundred and seventy boxes full of food, and it served about a hundred and ten cars. Plus, we'd made some, um, um, at-home deliveries where people couldn't come. So, uh, it's a, it's a good thing, and it's, uh, the, the, the demand out there is huge. Um, so, yeah, uh, I know we're, we're looking at a couple more food giveaways. Uh, I don't have the dates yet. Uh, I'll have those firmed up Wednesday, when I have a Zoom meeting. I know we, we're trying for, uh, uh, one in about two weeks, or no, next week in May, a week from Saturday, but the food, the, uh, the food bank delivers a truck, couldn't, uh, couldn't make that happen. So we're, uh, we're looking at, maybe we'll do it instead of a Saturday on a Friday or a different weekend. Uh, but we're looking at doing at least three more, uh, getting them lined up and going. Um, as I mentioned earlier, the glass partitions are, are installed in the office, they look great. Um, they actually came in and, uh, went over and beyond what they said they were gonna do, and put in a, a protective, um, tent over the windows, uh, to make it stronger. And, uh, it was, I'm very happy with the, the job that was done. Been doing a lot of work still on the beach property with the county, uh, looking for a closing. It really, it, it's probably gonna close, uh, be, in this month of May, at least the, the big piece of property, um, that we're getting from Stillson. I don't have a closing date on that, but it's, uh, we're, we're, we're making every attempt to, uh, get it closed by the end of May. Um, and we, we, we rescheduled the, the, um, cleanup, the township cleanup weekend, the June twenty-seventh on the mainland and the island, June twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth. There'll be a lot more of that, and I'll put in the newsletters and stuff going forward. And we're also doing a lot of work on the saw grant, or it's a one-point-one million dollar saw grant for our sewer, uh, system. Um, and, uh, also working with OHM on that, and on the intercept, sewer interceptor report. Uh, I'm hoping, I know we got a meeting with, uh, along with, um, Ira on, on, on the, on the report. Uh, they want to talk to us first, and then hoping they'll be ready to present a full, the final draft of the report to this board and Ira's board. In fact, we were talking about it before, uh, things got crazy, of having a joint meeting uh, for that, uh, report. And so we both can get, because it's a joint, it's a joint, um, project with us and Ira, so we both get on the same page, and if we have questions, everybody knows where everyone's standing at. Um, I've been working on the budgets, all seventeen of them, and with the department heads, got a pretty good handle on it. Then I gotta polish it up, and, uh, I'll send everything out to the board, and we'll, we'll set up some workshop meetings and, uh, and hopefully have that going in the next, uh, week or so. Um, but it, it's, it's not looking bad. And actually, I got a, a email today, where did I put it? Uh, like, late today, here it is, which really astonished me, because, you know, the general fund, we get revenue sharing. And I was planning on maybe getting a thirty-five percent cut from last year. Um, and like I say, this just came out, the, the fiscal year of twenty-twenty-one projected, um, revenue sharing, that's, uh, the executive, uh, is being, uh, recommended to the executives for, uh, uh, at the state. Uh, and they're only cutting us four-point-four percent, which will make my job a lot easier, and, um, because, uh, if I, we're looking at thirty-five percent, uh, cut, we'd, I wouldn't raise taxes, that's for sure, but we'd have to, you know, we, we do have a healthy fund, but balance. We'd have to make some choice decision, this, uh, decision, so. Anyhow, that's, uh, hot off the press, so I'm very happy about that. Let's see, uh, Starville Bridge, I, is it, um, I have not been out there, but I, I heard they're, uh, they're going on schedule as far as opening, and they're saying it's probably gonna open sometime this week. Uh, if I unmute you and someone has a, has been by there and knows anything different, let me know. Uh, last May seventh, we did the National Day of Prayer, went well at the Gawkwin School. So we, we did the churches, our churches, and, and, uh, I'll tell you what, the event really went well. Uh, I, I believe there was eighty-eight cars there. They did it drive-in style, and, uh, uh, everyone kept safe, and everyone enjoyed it fairly well. Elginak Fire Department was there, and along with our fire department and police department. Um, they're looking at doing the, something similar. Actually, I'll know more after Wednesday, for the high school seniors. Uh, bring, to bring it to the stage, we're right, pretty much where we had it, and doing some sort of a graduation, where it'd be drive-in style, people staying in their cars and, uh, and, uh, so forth. And I know there's a, um, a parade for the high schools, uh, was it Friday, I believe, Friday or Saturday, I can't remember. Um, other than that, all our rec programs are, um, pretty much suspended until further notice. I'm gonna go ahead and unmute everybody. So, um, does anybody have any questions on, on my report?
Do you want to make a comment on the Starville Bridge?
I thought you might.
I've been down there twice a week for the last month.
Yeah.
They're very, very close. They're done.
Yeah.
Concrete's poured, it looks like they're making the asphalt blends right now.
Right.
Plastic down the other day, I assume, and because it was wet, wet concrete.
Right.
I would assume that once that cures, they can stripe it, and it'll be ready to go.
Okay.
So I'm hoping with good weather, they should be ready to go by Friday.
Yeah, well, that's what they're, they're, they're basically saying, so, um, that's good news. Hey, hey, everybody, if, if, if you're not talking, can, can we have you mute? Can we have you mute, so we don't get all the background noise? Thank you. Because I, I, I'll mute you, if, uh, we're getting a lot of, uh, a lot of background noise. And if you have something to say, you can always unmute and, uh, and do that, it just makes this go a lot easier. All right, uh, so that's my supervisor's report. Do we have any public comments? Any public comments? Go ahead and unmute yourself, or you can, uh, wave or, or, uh,
Is this different than the, uh, is that a public hearing on new business number four, or is this the time?
No, it's not a public hearing, it's for our, uh, the board to, to take the recommendation from the planning commission.
So is that when we do the public comments now?
Yeah.
Okay. Should I go first?
Sure, say your name and the address and.
All right, Kelly Nader, and I'm calling, I'm here on behalf of nine zero nine nine Maple. Um, first, we did not receive a letter, nor did any neighbor that I spoke to regarding the public hearing at, for the planning commission. Nobody was notified about that public hearing. And let me see here. All right, the valuable, quote-unquote valuable resource is for one fa, one person or company, and it's detrimental to the many abutting residents' properties. We have, um, health, property value, quality of life of a lot of residents, families with young children. This property is zoned residential, it should stay that way. It's surrounded by homes. This sand and soil, it needs to be dewatered. We just had that experience with Oakdale, they, for about two months, they were dewatering. Sixty thousand gallons an hour into Clay Township Sewer. How, this is a five-year project, that has to be dewatered. Where's that water going? What's in that water? Um, let me see. Oakdale was going into our storm drain, I mean, according to Eagle, that was not legal. Um, I would like to ask every one of you board members, if this was in your backyard, would you pass this? I mean, this is noisy, we don't, this is, um, next to a landfill. And that one, uh, document says eighty-nine acres of the landfill. Matthew Vermulon, he owns, uh, twenty acres. I know some were split off, but I don't know how much property's in there, but eighty-nine acres was the landfill. And thank you, Artie, for, whoop, sorry. Um, thank you, Artie, for giving me this analytical laboratory report. I haven't had much time to look at it, but I do have some concerns. It says compound, it says compound also found and associated method blank. Estimated result due to extraction run outside of holding time. There's a lot of, like, things that went outside of, made it a qualifying test. Samples submitted and run outside of holding time. Elevated reporting limit due to low sample amount. Surrogate, surrogate recovery outside of control limits, no correction for total solids. And there's quite a few more. That was that. Okay, there was also on this analytical laboratory report, starred analytes are not any LAP accredited. It said, anything that is starred is not any LAP accredited. I do not know what any LAP means, but there's a lot of stars, and that kind of makes it sound like this report isn't totally up to par because of what they couldn't do. Um, the applicant shall demonstrate that there will be no very serious consequences resulting from the extraction of these natural resources. Shall means must. So there's two pages of conclusions from our Gifford and Webster. And it sounds like the planning commission was just disregarding those. This is also, has a lot of wetlands in it, and it's residential. All adjoining properties that permit residential uses shall be protected by a minimum six-foot-high earth and berm. That was kind of blown off at the planning commission. When, how soon, it, it has not been met. It didn't sound like they were even gonna try. Um, I feel like this is moving way too fast. I do not feel we should make any variances on this. This is a residential area. People bought their properties. This will make their values go low, the noise, the dust, the, um, disruption of landfill is not healthy. And I don't see a need for it. There's other places that have sand. Um, also, in this PowerPoint, it said, um, they can, they can work not nearer than, it said fifty, and then in parentheses, five feet, but then I found in another place, they can come up to five feet of our property line. I mean, that's ludicrous. And then my other thing is the two conclusions. I also, um, also want to say, these comments are not personal to this business or these people. It's just, I own property, I would not even be at this meeting if I didn't get the original notice, but then the other meetings, we never got noticed. I do feel like when they're saying they gave us free sand, I think that's a conflict. They gave us free sand, now they want the board and the planning commission to overlook some of these things that are even our own planners of Gifford, Webber, Webster is, um, recommending. Let me see. And then, um, as it was mentioned at the planning commission meeting, this property is rumored to be sold as soon as this passes. So anything this property owner says, the new owners don't have to abide by that, and that's a big concern. And I think that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thanks, Kelly. I can address a couple things. Um, as far as any questions you have on any of the, uh, environmental, uh, reports or anything, you need to call Eagle. Um, that's not a township issue. They, the, uh, Eagle's the one, the permitting agency for, for all the environmental concerns on this project. And as I mentioned to you on the, um, in the email I sent you, uh, the state changed their laws in two thousand and sixteen as far as, uh, these kind of projects, they call it the, I can't remember that, what act it was now. But, um, we, we cannot tell them that they cannot put a sand pit here because it's not zoned right, or, or anything else. The only thing we can, we can do is make sure it fulfills our zone, our current zoning ordinance as far as setbacks, and the amount of acreage required, which I, I believe they have. Um, we don't.
I appreciate that. I did call Eagle, and unfortunately, they are, um, I also called on the wetlands, as, as every meeting I keep showing. I feel like Clay Township has no, uh, appreciation for our beautiful area and our wetlands, but, um, I got a couple calls into Eagle, but because of Governor Whitmer's, um, budget cuts, they're not working on Mondays, so they'll be calling. I did get a call, but they said they'll get me information tomorrow.
As far as wetlands, when they're an enclosed area like that, if they're under five acres, uh, Eagle does not, uh, recognize them or regulate them. So if, if you have like an area that, that's wet, and you want to develop it, and if, if it's not connected to any other wetlands, Eagle doesn't regulate it. So I'm sorry to say, I mean, I, I, I'm pretty, advocate on wetlands also.
Are you saying this is only five acres that they're mining?
No, I, I'm saying that it, it's an Eagle job to regulate, number one. And number two, if it's five acres or less, they don't have any regulation on it. Uh, they did the same thing, I, I was out there with Oakdale, they had a small part that was wetland. Uh, they did the same thing. I, I was out there with Oakdale. They had a small part that was wetland. And I talked to the DEQ person themselves, and they said, "Yeah, if it's under five acres and it's not connected to any other wetland, um, they, that we don't regulate it."
Okay, thank you. And by the way, I do want to tell you, I emailed you about one, one-thirty, and you got back to me right away with these documents. But I would like, once again, I say every meeting, these packets would be really helpful and transparent if this was submitted to us when you guys put out the agenda. And, I mean, I tried doing a lot of things. Thank you for sending it to me, but, you know, this is above my head. And I would have liked more time.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Any other, uh, public comments? Go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hi, Teresa Holger-Doherty from 497 Willard Avenue and Algnac and other properties in the area. I do have a question. Has there been an environmental study done to prove that no contaminants are in the proposed area to be rezoned? Has the township and the applicant guaranteed that once zoning changes and work starts, that there will be no contamination leaking from the closed adjacent landfill and over to the newly zoned location to be mined? I mean, residents are concerned. So it is important to ask for them and their future generations that this does not end up being a health hazard. So what steps have been done prior to this to ensure that?
The, um, again, as far as the contaminants or possible contaminants on, on, on this project, Eagle has a hundred percent o- o- of the responsibility for, for your concerns. The township, we don't, we don't have our, our own environmentalists. Uh, Eagle does, and we don't issue them a permit, uh, based on environmental studies. That's, that's Eagle's job and, and, uh, um, to do that. And I know that they take samples on any new sand pit once a week, and they, they get compiled and by an independent laboratory, and they're sent to, uh, Eagle for, uh, once a month for their review.
That, I do understand that. However, if they're gonna be mining, mining the material, the sand, the clay, the topsoil, shouldn't that be examined first? I know they can bore down and sample that, because sampling the water is not gonna give, you know, results that are in the soil. And then that soil's gonna go from that area to all these different locations. People are gonna be coming in contact with that.
So, like I say, that's, that, yeah, that's a function of Eagle. I mean, the township cannot require it under the, the, the new laws of the state in two thousand, from two thousand sixteen. We cannot require it. That's what Eagle does.
Isn't it common sense, though, because it's adjacent to a landfill, that you would want to test that first? And wouldn't the township members want to see that that has been tested before they just go say, "Yes, okay"?
Well, that's what we'll find out in our meeting when we vote. But, but like I say, it's Eagle's responsibility and job to do this. It's not the township's job or responsibility. They took all that away from us because, uh, they, they don't want different bars, you know, by township, by city, by township, by county. Uh, they, they want it all unified through the whole state of what has to be done. And that's why, and I, I believe that's the logic behind Lansing when they passed that law in two thousand sixteen.
That's all I wanted to know.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comments? Any other public comments? You'll have to uncl- I'm sorry, go ahead. Any other, Galaxy S10E, is that, is that you? Are you, do you have a public comment? Any other public comments? Not hearing them, not seeing them. Okay, I'll move right along. Consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of the board meeting minutes of May fourth, two thousand twenty, and check reports.
We have motion and support. Any discussion on any of that? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes. First thing we have on our new business is the old club, open space renewal. Uh, this is a ten-year, um, every ten years they have to renew this. It doesn't cost us anything as far as tax revenue we receive. Uh, Sherry wrote up, uh, a letter about it, and it's actually where Hill Trash Island is that they, they, they got from, uh, the state. And another piece, I think, the port where they do their water, near where their water plant is. So, um, uh, as part of, uh, of them attaining this, again, uh, you know, we have to approve it as a board. It's been, uh, it goes for every ten years. Uh, been doing this, what, beginning nineteen eighty-three? Said in the letter, so. Does anybody have any questions? I think Sherry's on this call, yeah. Hey, hey, Sherry, did I sum that up okay? I just unmuted you.
Okay, yep, that's correct. And it, actually, the biggest benefit for the property owner, they receive on their federal income tax and this. So this just says they're not gonna develop those areas, which most of them are barely underwater at this time. But yep, as you said, there's no, um, it doesn't affect our tax revenue at all.
Yeah, there, th- these lots are wet.
Yep.
So would anyone like, uh, make a motion or have some discussion on this?
I'll make a motion to approve the old club open space renewal through five thirty-one, two thousand thirty.
Support.
Okay, motion, support. Any, uh, discussion on that? Hearing none. Roll call, vote, or not roll call, uh, if, signify, if you, yes, signify, uh, if you're in agreement, uh, by saying yes or wave your hand.
Yes.
Yes, yes, yes.
Could you confirm who seconded that motion?
Me.
Chrissy did.
Thank you.
Okay, motion passes.
Somebody has their TV on in the background. It's just...
Yeah, I'm trying to see who's, who, who pops up, and I'm not seeing it.
Sounds like SpongeBob.
Yeah. All right, well, we'll keep on going. Um, the fire, uh, department, we have a, a request, and this was a budgetal item, to replace our outboard motors. It costs a thirty-five thousand eight hundred and fifty-one dollars and thirty-one cents. Uh, we don't have to, actually, it doesn't make sense for us to put it out for bid, because this is bought under the state, um, bid process. In other words, the state of Michigan goes out and gets a bid, and they do remarkably well. I wish I could buy these motors for this price. And, uh, the two that he has on there is eighteen years old, and they, uh, definitely do need to be replaced. Um, and the new ones will be, instead of the two-stroke, will be four-stroke, and, um, be a lot cheaper to run all the way around with maintenance and, uh, fuel. Does anybody have any questions for chief on this?
I spoke to the chief earlier, and, uh, it makes a good decision for us. We don't want to get the rescue boat out there and send a rescue boat to go rescue the rescue boat. So, uh, those motors are old. They do take a lot of beating. A lot of, uh, hours are on them as well.
Yeah, these Mercuries are, like I say, they're eighteen years old. They're a lot of hours on first generation, one-fifty OptiMax, and, uh, yeah, I've been after them for a couple of years, actually, to make this happen.
So those are two hundred, tho- those are two hundred horsepower motors each, right?
Yes. And we did put in a budget to, to do this purchase, so.
Okay. I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to approve the outboard motors, uh, for the fire department, uh, thirty-five thousand eight hundred and fifty-one and, uh, thirty-one cents out of line number two zero six dash nine seven one.
Support.
The motion is support. Hey, chief, George, um, when do you think they would be, uh, installed? Do we have a, any timeframe?
They'll be, we'll, we'll receive in about three weeks.
Three weeks, okay.
We'll have them in time for, uh, jobby noonner.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was gonna ask as far as the holidays are concerned. Do we have another boat, backup boat or anything like that, or we sold it?
We got two of them.
Okay.
We have the fire boat. Um, we should be putting that in hopefully this week. Uh, we do have it set up with, uh, the, uh, people to, uh, letter it, and once that gets lettered, uh, we'll put it in.
Okay, yeah, that's what I was asking. Okay.
Okay, any other questions? We do have motion and support. Do we have support?
Yes.
Okay. Um, hearing no more discussion, roll call, vote, please.
Christie Hilton?
Yes.
Chris O'Regan?
Yes.
Sandy Kufel?
Yes.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
John Mancherky?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Artie Bryson?
Yes. Okay, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, next we have a planning commission appointment. Chris Hilton. Um, I'm making a recommendation to, uh, this board, uh, that we, uh, fill the vacant position with, uh, appoint Chris to the commission. I've, I've known Chris myself six, seven years on a professional level. Uh, he has firsthand experience of the Clay Township infrastructure. And, uh, I, I've been in several meetings with him, and he's, uh, he's very knowledgeable, and, uh, he comes to, when I can see, conclusions, uh, when problems, uh, exist that we have to solve at, at a meeting. And, um, I know for a fact, he, he, he's the water super- plant supervisor for Ira Township and the TPW for Ira. He's a water plant supervisor for, uh, New Baltimore. He used to be the wa- a water plant manager for the Algnac plant. So, uh, he's got, like I say, a very good working, uh, knowledge of all our infrastructure, so. I will make a motion that, uh, I'm recommending that Chris Hilton be, uh, appointed to our, uh, planning commission for, to fill the vacancy.
I will support that.
Yeah, motion is support.
After reading his resume, uh, Artie coming in there, I, uh, I'm much impressed that he is already with, uh, some township, although not ours right now, but, uh, he'll be a welcome member to the planning.
Yeah.
Which I'm a part of.
He is Chrissy's, um, husband. Are you gonna recuse yourself from this vote, Chrissy?
Yes, I am.
Okay. So just so everybody knows, I'll mute you.
I've worked with Chris on a couple of different occasions, and I think we're getting a very professional candidate here, so I'm pretty excited about it.
Yeah, I am too, so. Any more discussion?
I like the idea too.
Good. Okay, hearing none. All in favor of appointing Chris Hilton to, uh, the planning commission to take over, uh, uh, existing term that was vacated? Signify or wave, or say, signify by saying aye or wave.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone oppose? All right, motion carry. Congratulations, Chris. Um, okay, next we have, uh, blue water material. It's before us to approve the, uh, special land use and soil removal permit of the adjoining property of what we're, uh, the blue water material does, um, is already, uh, working. And I, I know we had some discussion on this. As in your packet, um, the planning commission had, uh, public hearings, and I'm not sure how many meetings were about this, but, uh, they unanimously approved it and sent it to us. I'd like to open up for any discussion, uh, the members have. Um, Mark, you're, you're, you're on the planning commission, so let me, what's your thoughts?
Well, there was a number, it was like five, uh, ordinances that they had to provide, uh, some communication on, on whether or not they're going to, uh, adhere to those ordinances now or put some timing in place. And I don't know if they're on, uh, the Zoom here, so we can hear from them or not.
Yeah, I believe they are.
I'd like to see where they are with that and satisfactory answer.
Okay, why don't we, well, I'll bring them on here in a second. So you're talking about this timing. Um, one thing that was, that was from the planning commission meeting, I know, uh, there was a question on one side of a, uh, pointing in a six-foot berm. And they, they basically said, I, I can't remember. I don't have the drawings in front of me, but there is like five, six hundred feet, uh, between where the work project is and the property line. And for them to put a berm in, they would have to tear down five hundred feet of really nice trees. And I, I'd sure hate to see that happen if we don't even know that there's a problem exists yet, because the, the reason to put in a, a berm is for noise. But I would make a caveat if, uh, if, uh, my thinking is, if, uh, we allow them to go ahead, um, without the berm, but if we see it, because we don't know if there is a problem or not. You know, we can guess, but nobody knows. If there is a problem down the road, we may have to require them to, at some point, put a berm in. Um, but that's my thinking. And, um, also too, um, these permits, like the soil removal permit, it, they gotta go to the township, as you all know, on the board, every year for renewal. So if something's not being done right, it can be addressed at their yearly renewal also. So, um, that's the only thing I really had from it. Like I mentioned, uh, in answering public comments, you know, I talked to the EPA. They had no issues with what's going on right now, uh, right next door to the existing site, and, uh, they don't anticipate any issues here either, so I gotta take them for their word of it. And if there is, is, is there a prob- is there an issue or job to, to correct it? Not so much the townships and, uh...
And the other issue was dust on the road. I think they satisfied that with the remarks that she, uh, applicant already made. Uh, fencing, that's already, uh, you know, pretty much in place, or will be. And like you said, they can, uh, we can review that. Actually, we're gonna, if you want to, we're gonna prove this on a, uh, you know, sixty days.
Well...
For, but it's gonna, actually, in June, it's gonna come for, in, in, um, renewal anyways, right?
Well, for their other one, I don't think this pi- piece will, because we're just doing it now. It's a, a yearly renewal. But I, I would just say, hey, you know, and we, we, we can, maybe we can require it if needed down the road. And if that's, if that's the case, to give them maximum amount of time to, to put a berm in, that's reasonable. Um, but like I say, I, you know, I like trees myself. Yeah.
Well, I wouldn't want to see any trees come down, because if you cut the trees down, that, uh, i- impacts property value as well.
Big time.
And, and I've sold a number of homes over on that road, being in real estate, and I do know that that is a heavily forested area over there, so.
Right. Hey, Mark, have you sold homes, uh, uh, adjacent property, like off of a stone or, or anything off of that area too? Or notice what they're already doing? Has that affected property values on the other side?
Yeah, I have. I haven't, no, they're not impacted.
Right.
You know, that's, they're, they're behind, uh, out of sight, basically. You don't even know they're there.
Right.
Unless you see a truck pull out.
Yeah.
Artie, may I make a comment about the berm also?
Yeah.
I, I see no sense in cutting all those trees down.
No.
To, if it's for a noise issue, if you cut the trees down, you're gonna have more noise. So as you said, wait and see if it becomes a bigger problem. But I, I don't see that as a problem and just leave the trees there.
Right, I rather have, have trees than, you know, especially that wide of a space.
Right, right.
Versus a six-foot berm myself.
Yes, I agree.
Artie, I'd like to mention, I live directly across from the easement driveway.
Yeah, it is in your backyard, isn't it?
Right in my front yard.
Yeah.
I don't hear a lot of noise from the existing pit right now. And it's relatively close to me. The noise I hear is the car traffic. On the easement. However, when I bought my property, I realized I bought it across from an industrial area. So they have a right to do what they do over there, you know, to do business. They have a right to do what they need to do on their property. But I don't know if you want me to recuse myself because I'm directly across the street, but I, I don't see a problem with anything that they're doing.
Okay. Artie?
I think this was mentioned once before. There's a unique statutory language that impacts that request. And I'll just read this out of the Planner's Guide for Michigan Zoning Enable Act. An ordinance shall not be, a mining ordinance shall not prevent the extraction by mining of valuable natural resources from any property unless very serious. Consequences would result from the extraction of those natural resources. So even with or without the ordinances, you know, the statutory state of Michigan would allow it. However, we have to define whether or not we're gonna have serious consequences. And I think that's what we're talking about now.
Right, and, and my, my, my research and what's the serious consequences, I was told that's mostly environmental. And again, that would fall off on Eagle's responsibility for their permit that they get from Eagle. And, and it's really not a function, the environmental aspect of it is not a function of the township.
So going on those weekly water tests, if Eagle does that test and they find out to be high on some of their limits of saturation. Do they have the ability to shut that mining operation down?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, by all means they do.
I just wanted to make that point.
Yep, and would. I believe how it works, I, I believe how it works, the lab, independent lab takes weekly samples. But if something's out of, out of proportion or something's not good, alarming, they notify Eagle right away and Eagle would jump on it. But if nothing, if nothing is reported that's out of whack, they summarize it and send the report into Eagle once a month. Do we have any other discussion or anything on this?
Oh, Artie, if, if we were to approve this measure. And we were to start fielding complaints from the residents over on Maple Road. Would we have the authority to then require the berm at a later date?
Well, I would put that in the motion. That's what I'm recommending.
So unlike our planner, we've actually been to the site and looked at their dig and their proposed dig areas.
Yep.
From what I can see, and some of my other fellow trustees who are diligent enough to take a look. Their proposed dig site is no closer and perhaps even further away than their previous dig site to residential area. I don't like the idea that our residents have to purchase sand from out of town. I don't like that idea. It costs extra money. It'll cost our residents more money. Trucking fees and hauling fees and more time. This is a pretty well laid out plan. And if we're confident that right now we have a natural barrier between the proposed pit and the nearest residence. Then we'd be absurd to make them knock that barrier down. However, if you know mining, they're gonna dig from the inside out. So at a later date, if we were to bump resistance from our residents, we have an obligation to protect them as well.
Yes, we do.
Berm inside the proposed dig area and make them excavate that portion last. Which would probably satisfy both requirements. They wouldn't lose out on the opportunity to dig. And our residents could possibly have another layer of barrier. But I have no objections with what's going on here. As long as the planning commission is satisfied and they continue to meet the requirements of Eagle. Then they have my support as a trustee.
Okay. Does anyone wanna make a motion?
Or I'll make a motion that we approve the SLU soil removal permit for the Blue Water Building Materials.
Special land use, comma?
Special land use.
And soil.
Removal permit on the adjoining property of Blue Water Materials.
Can, can I have you edit that at, if we see that there's an issue in the one area that doesn't have a berm. That we can at a later date require a berm to be put in?
Yes, so how would we structure that? Clay Township would then reserve the right. At any time to require a berm on their nearest residential property line. Does that get it done?
I believe so. Let me, let me restate your, your motion and correct me if I'm wrong and so everybody gets it. The motion is to approve the special land use and soil removal permit for the adjoining property. At Blue Water Materials. And also on the condition that down at a certain point in time, if the township deems it necessary. To have the berm be installed on the one side where the residential side is, that they shall so do in a reasonable amount of time.
Yeah, it's a little, but it gets it done.
Yeah. All right, does any, does everyone on the board understand the motion?
Yes.
Is there any more discussion?
Was there support?
What?
He just made the motion. Did anybody support it?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Is it, do we have support?
I'll support.
Okay, we have motion and support. Everyone understand the motion and do we have any more discussion?
What about page three where it's talking about the area on the plans that indicate, indicates a proposed future use? I know they talked about it at the planning commission meeting. But do we need to say anything about that in our motion?
I don't think so. That basically says that if there's a future use there, that they have to go back to the planning commission. If they, if something that needs to be expanded, they have to go back or, or at some point in time if they want to develop that for residential homes.
That was by planning commission, that was removed from their site plan that was turned into building.
That, that's correct, Cindy.
That's right. That's right.
It's a non-issue.
That's right.
There is, there's one other issue as far as the bonding is concerned. Were we supposed to talk to the attorney about setting up a bond?
Yeah, they already have a bond and we'll just keep that same bond going forward.
Okay, fair enough.
If there was a new, a new person in there, they would have to post a bond. And if it was sold. You know, the new person under our ordinance would have to give the township a.
Get a new bond, get a new bond and basically a new permit.
Right. Well, not a permit, but, but the permit stays, but they would have to get, get a bond. And like I say, every, every year, this has to be renewed every year. We have, we have public hearings on them and, and vote on, I think we have two or three other ones in the township. Any other discussion or questions?
Hey, Mark?
Yes.
Was this unanimously approved?
What is that again? Repeat?
Was this unanimously approved?
Yes.
Commission?
It was unanimously approved and moved to the board for final approval.
There it is.
Yeah.
Based, based on the conditions. You see those conditions in that motion. And I think we've discussed that they've pretty much been satisfied.
Yep. Okay, any more discussion? Here now, let's do roll call vote.
Crystal Regan?
Yes.
Sandy Kufel?
Yes.
Mark Bouchard?
Yes.
Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Christie Hilton?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. And next we have the new item five on purchase of the firewall. As you all know, what was driving this is every time it rains, our phones at the police and the township all go down. And nine-one-one doesn't go down. I wanna make that clear. I wanna get that out. But our phone service does. And I think it was like two weeks ago, the last time it rained and a phone went down. She started talking, I know my coach, myself, we're talking to High Tech and how can we fix this? And they were doing some research. Lo and behold, our phones went down again today. And we got the quote actually today for a fix.
Artie, can you, can you, can you unmute everyone that isn't talking?
Yeah. Thank you. Okay, everybody's muted but me, so I'll unmute you in a couple of minutes after I'm done rambling. So again, our phones were down today and we got the quote today and the solution. Oh, it is now, we were with Comcast first and we had actually worse issues with our phone over IPs going out. And we switched to AT&amp;T hoping to have better service, but like I say, we found that every time it rains, something's happening. Where we lose phone and our IT people seem, I do too, and Mike will probably vouch, vouch, coach or chief, police chief. That somewhere along the grid, there's a junction that's underwater or something. AT&amp;T and Comcast is over an old antiquated copper line. That's, that's the only way. And, and we can't get, get, get rid of that. They are not talking about upgrading it at all in your future. So they came up with a plan where we switch it over to a fiber. To a fiber optic connection, which we already have in our dispatch. And they switch it over to that. And, but at the same time, they recommend that we replace our firewall anyhow because it's fairly old and antiquated. And the new firewall will give us a lot more security for, on all our, our systems, our internet, our, our phone system. Our, everything we do, business far as any kind of cyber attack. And that does cover the police and the township home. This phone system too, by switching it over, it will take care of all of our campuses, the water department, the both fire stations. Our general office and the police. That was one of my questions. And another advantage was our internet service will probably be twice as fast downloading and a lot faster uploading. We don't do a whole lot uploading, but we'll have better, better speeds with that over the fiber optics. And the downside on it is it will basically be about a hundred and fifty dollars more a month for the service. But so that's really the, the question we have to determine. It will, it will be almost five thousand dollars for the firewall, which really I think it needs to be replaced anyhow. For security reasons. And then, then once we switch to the system, it'll be a hundred and fifty dollars more a month. But we'll, we'll get a lot better phone service and our phones won't fall down whenever we have a storm. And quite frankly, I think that's the worst, that's the most time we need our communications up and running is when we do have a storm. So I believe that's it in a nutshell. I'll go ahead and unmute. Everybody if you have any, did I sum that up?
Well, it comes down to what you're saying. I mean, it's the whole reason that we got, that, that we went to the new. System as well, because everything that is an infrastructure with AT&amp;T is from the sixties and seventies. And AT&amp;T has gotten away from any of that technology. And that's why you've seen the new Peninsula Fiber Network who came in and took over the process with all the nine-one-one systems. AT&amp;T is into the new broadband, wireless, everything that's within the new age. And they're not touching anything with, that's got anything to do with this, the old archaic system that they have. So pretty much it's being phased out. And really now, I mean, the only thing, the only smart move is to go fiber. And with the fiber, but builds in a redundant system to where if the one, it, one fails, we have a fail safe. Mostly be downs two to four minutes, opposed to several hours to days that we're dealing with right now. And unfortunately, it's a fix that, that you can't fix with the way everything sits right now. And then, like I say, with them coming through and doing a, a look at our entire system. Recommendation was to replace the firewall as well, which updates it into the new cybersecurity as far as dealing with both email. HTTP, HTTP sites, everything that's got to do with web access. So really, it's gonna enhance both the police and the township offices as well. So it's something that's well needed.
Okay, does anybody have any questions or anything on it?
I commented early, earlier today that I was surprised we don't have it already, but. Well, it brings to mind the flow meters that we, that we approved last, last meeting. And, and eventually tying those into our system. Obviously, fiber optic would be the chosen method, but I don't know if that's something that this company can. Tie into or not.
And that's something that can be looked at. The thing is, we hadn't had this fiber technology and it wasn't pulled up to us until we did this. The new upgrade with our nine-one-one system, which we've been working on for about the last, about a year now. And we're, we're in the final stages of it. It's up and running right now, but still. Working out a few tinks with it, but it's actually a massive system that we're dealing with. But that, that allowed them to bring this fiber in, which opened up this possibility for us as well. Otherwise, we wouldn't even have this possibility right now.
Right, right, right.
I just wanted to make mention, the agenda lists the price at forty-one sixteen and the price is actually forty-nine sixteen.
Right, it's forty-nine sixteen, that includes installation too.
So our bill on a monthly basis, you said it's gonna increase by a hundred and fifty, so what's that going to be then? Seven something actually on, but.
Yeah, by twelve. Eighteen hundred bucks. And this company too, they have a service level agreement, SLA. Of two hours before they, they start, they're here on site and fixing an issue. Whereas AT&amp;T and Comcast, it's more like two days.
Well, Artie, you know, we also at the, at the point at the township with as many computers as are running on internet. We would probably be in the near future beefing up our internet service. So I don't even, I think that would probably close the gap as well. I mean, I would, I think the police department's bill for internet is somewhere around two hundred dollars. You know, ours would probably be about the same. I think right now we're at one seventy. at 170 a month. So lose that bill, but.
Right. We did the math with the service we're now paying, plus, you know, we went near the Comcast and, and the township hall. The difference is about 100, right now, 150 bucks a month.
And Artie, right now, like you're saying for future, right now, we're running 50 megabyte download speeds, 15, 15 megabyte upload speeds. This brings it to 100 download, 100 upload, which is massive compared to where we're at right now. So that brings it all into the future as we build and onto our infrastructure. This is going to support it. So.
Yep. Okay. Does anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the, the fiber optic firewall for police and administration offices and township offices with the tune of $4,916.84. Is there a line item in that?
Yeah, I don't have it handy right now. It'll be under, probably, I don't know if it'd be computer or, or our phone system. But we'll stick it in one of those.
Line item TBD.
Yeah.
Support.
Okay, we have motion and support. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye or wave.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. All right, next we have board member comments. Cindy Valentine, have any comments?
Oh, someone mentioned earlier, I think it was Kelly, about getting our board packet online. So the issue with that is typically I can't get it to scan that large of a file to be able to send it anywhere to upload it. So I did give Artie a quote for some software for the agenda that should be able to help us be able to upload that to the internet a little bit easier, because it'll all be done online. So we'll, we'll look at that come budget time to see if we can get it in there to be able to get our agenda in our, we'll pack it out a little bit easier.
I'll tell you what, because of, I got that email of the state revenue sharing, we'll probably be okay to do that. So. Hey, Mark?
Yeah, I'd like to welcome Chris Hilton to the planning commission. Probably see him on the next meeting, which is, I don't know, this month maybe?
Yeah, we from Wednesday, I think you have.
Yeah, Wednesday. And also like to compliment Kristy on the balance sheet that she put together for the last financial for the treasury report. Looks, looks good. Looks great. Thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
And I also like to acknowledge all the departments that we have in Clay Township for the professional job that they've been doing during the COVID-19 fiasco, I'll call it that. So thank you.
Okay. Joanne? Hey, Joanne? Do you have any public comments, Joanne? Are you out checking your pump?
Let's stretch that fiber optic out to Joanne's place.
Yeah. Yeah, she's not muted.
She's muted on my screen.
Not on mine. I'm gonna mute her and then unmute her. No? Okay, I just unmuted everybody. Joanne?
No, she must have muted it herself, so she needs to unmute.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll press on. Sandy, how are you?
Good. I don't have much. Just want to continue to thank our, our chief responders over there, Chief George Rose and Mike Coach for doing a phenomenal job for our community. Thank you for everything that you guys do. And hoping our next meeting is in a boardroom.
Right. I'm sorry, I'm cracking up Mike's background. Where are you at, The Simpsons?
Look at this face appropriation.
We do this with a straight face.
I gotta borrow that.
What's that?
Anything else?
I think that's it. Next time I'm going to have a background if we're still.
Yeah, me too. Chris?
Got two things. First thing, Artie, is I would like to organize a neighborhood cleanup around where I live. I've got a couple streets in mind that could use some help. And what my concerns are is some of the ditches and runoff are making its way to the marsh are very dirty.
Yeah.
Tires, trash, cans, different things like that. So what I'd be looking for is some type of help with the debris removal. I don't need any help organizing. I don't need any help buying trash bags. We can organize to pick it up. But I'm wondering if I can get some help actually physically removing the debris from the street after it's picked up.
After, once you have it along the side of the streets.
Yeah, and we can, we can do that. Open format to see kind of how I tread on this and whether I pair it up with the cleanup scheduled in late June or how.
Yeah, we, we can do that. It does any, any, I believe you can actually adopt your street too.
Adopt a road.
Adopt a road.
And then the county already will come in.
Right.
Send the truck to pick it all up. They'll actually give you garbage bags. They'll give you.
Everything.
County would do that?
Yeah, I can get with you, Chris, and, and help you out with it.
Yeah, I just, you know, I walk a lot because I've got time on my hands and I'm concerned about some of the ditches and runoffs, especially up and down Morrow Road, Starville Road, Holland Road, all the direct feeds into the marsh. I don't like it. So Mike, I appreciate that, chief. I'll get with you this week.
Sounds good.
And last thing is I would like to congratulate all of our high school seniors who are preparing to graduate this year. In an uncertain time, I have full confidence in your ability to succeed at the next level. I wish you the absolute best and encourage you to reach out to me should you need a reference or any professional information. So I appreciate you, young people, and good luck in your future endeavors.
Nice. Okay, thank you. Chrissy?
Nope, I don't have anything.
Okay. I just want to, um, looking back on Chris too, with high school seniors, and I, I got to congratulating them. It's, it's a weird year for them. And, you know, they didn't get a proper chance of saying goodbye to a lot of their friends, and that's hard to organize, to make it happen again. I mean, soon as graduation happens, people start going off. But one thing is, who is, I want to mention is before the DDA tomorrow night is to pay for our part of the senior banners, where we're going to recognize the senior banners and put, put their picture on a banner on the flagpoles or on the streetlights while recognizing them. And then after a while, we'll pull them off and give each senior their, and their banner for them. They can hang in their garage or whatever they want to do with it. But I think that's a pretty, I gotta cover my mic up. I can't, I can't handle this. And I think that's a pretty cool project. I'd like to also congratulate Chris Hilton for stepping up to being on the planning commission. We're going to push you to work here soon. And I want to remind everyone too, to, I think we're pretty good. I'll have to check out what our numbers are in Clay. But to fill out the online consensus or the census form, I think it's census 2020 census or census 2020, I put out a few of the links, but that's really important for us because that's how we get proper representation from the state level and the federal level. They look at our population. That's how we get revenue sharing from the state and from the county for our parks and rec, for all kinds of things. It's based on population. We have X amount of people per resident, or X amount of money per resident. So please be counted. It helps us out in so many different ways and, and gets our fair share of revenue so we can provide better services for you. So we're at a disadvantage actually because about half of our property is not homesteaded. It's non-homesteaded. That means they, they get, they're counted someplace else in another community. But we still have to provide services for these non-homesteaded homes here. And they'll say, well, we pay more taxes. Well, the school gets more taxes for it, but we don't. And so it, it definitely helps us out to make sure everyone gets counted in their house. Other than that, you know, I mean, I'm just overwhelmed on how charitable and how many volunteers we're having to help people that are in our community that have a real need. And it, I see it both sides. I get contact by people, oh geez, Artie, I'm having a hard time. And I feel their frustrations on it and everything else. But on the same token too, we got a lot of people standing up that want to help and are helping. So it's, it's a great thing. So other than that, that's all I have. Does anyone want to make a motion?
Motion.
All right, all in favor. All right, thanks for joining in, everybody. And everybody have a great, a great couple weeks and be safe and be smart. I'm sorry, Mike, you're cracking me up right now. I'll talk to you later. Thanks a lot, everybody. Good night.
Good night.
Night.
Hey, Joanne's back.
Joanne's back. Joanne, you got any comments?
Well, yes, I guess. I don't know what I'm doing here. I'm clicking every button trying to get, on this coming Wednesday, two days from today, we will be trying a Zoom meeting for the ZBA. We have three different issues on there. So it'll be a new experience for this group. And I certainly hope I don't have as much trouble with that meeting on Zoom as I did with this one. I have no idea what happened, but.
Okay, I'll stop. We'll look at it.
Yeah, okay.
All right. Thanks a lot. I'm gonna end the meeting now. Thanks, everybody. Bye-bye.
Good night.